Welcome to our May regularly scheduled board meeting. We have a full house. Good to see everyone. Mark, can you come over please?
Sure. Mr. Babbitt?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mrs. Johann?
Here.
Mr. Kuhn?
Here.
Mrs. Reagan?
Here.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Here.
We all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. McCall?
All right, well, good evening and thank you for attending tonight's Olathe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel as important that we review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. This meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Please understand that patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, we request that the audience members not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting outside of recognitions. This ensures the board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending and we will now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Right, moving on to agenda item 2.01. There's a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Yurkovich and a second by Mrs. Steele.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
Right, motion carries six to zero. Moving on to recognitions and awards, 3.01.
Yes, well, good evening, everyone. As you can see by our very full house, we have a lot to celebrate tonight, so we will dive right in. And to start us off, we are proud to recognize Silas and Maddie's as an outstanding community partner. So I would like to invite owners Jim and Cindy England to the front, along with Olathe Public Schools Director of Community Development Heather Schoonover and Olathe Retired Employee Association Board Member Marcia Stoker. Silas and Maddie's Homemade Ice Cream is a family-owned and operated business that has been a Kansas City favorite since 1997. And as a community partner, they have offered strong financial and volunteer resources to enhance excellence in Olathe Public Schools. In partnership with the Olathe Public Schools Foundation, they provided support to pay off student lunch debt, donated to the Taste of the Town event, and are regular contributors to the Women's Giving Circle. They have been a longstanding adopt-a-school business partner at Forest View Elementary and have donated in-kind ice cream products and financial contributions to the Olathe Public Schools Retired Employee Association fundraising events. Most recently, they fed the entire end-of-the-year volunteer appreciation event by providing a variety of ice cream to packed, to a packed house of 320 people. Yum. In addition to these robust programs across the district, Silas and Maddie's employs students as they learn customer service and real-world small-business skills. It is our honor to express sincere appreciation for their consistent financial and volunteer dedication to our school district. Thank you, guys. Well, next, we are excited to honor our KC BizFest winners, so I'd like to invite Isabel Scheidel, Lea Abai, Graziano Paramo, Carmen Guerra, and Mia Estrada to the front, along with Olathe Northwest Principal Chris Sook, Olathe North Assistant Principal Camille Zimmerman, Student Support Specialist Jean Cuntaro, and Olathe Northwest Hispanic Leadership Club sponsor Elizabeth Jansen. These students recently competed in the KC BizFest competition, which offers high school students in the greater Kansas City metropolitan area an opportunity to learn a variety of life skills and business techniques. Olathe had the most students from any KC Metro District at this year's 21st Annual KC BizFest with a total of 48 students participating. The final day of the four-day event consists of students presenting to a judge in a preliminary round to determine six finalists, and all six finalists receive an automatic scholarship that can be taken to any university of the students choosing. As you can see, we cleaned up pretty well with five of the six finalists' spots. First place went to Isabel, second place to Lea, fourth to Graziano, fifth place went to Carmen, and sixth place went to Mia. So congratulations, you guys. We are so happy. And we will take our picture, but if there's any family members here tonight, please feel free to pop up and take pics. I see a couple, don't be shy. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Great. I'd now like to invite up our MathWings champions for the year, along with Math Coordinator Spencer Brown, Principals Amy Hercules and Greg Oborney, as well as MathWings sponsors Cindy Madsen, Stacy Anderson, Kelly Seward, and Dion Hobson. We've got a lot of awesome kiddos who are champions this year. For those of you who may not know, MathWings is a district-wide elementary school competitive club. The meetings consist of intense mental math skills, problem-solving competitions, vocabulary review, and various math scrimmages. There were three events held throughout the year, and these students up front represented the winning teams at the 4th and 5th grade levels. In the 4th grade category, Sunnyside Elementary took first place in both the fall and spring competitions, while Arbor Creek took first place in the February competition. In the 5th grade competition, Regency Place students were back-to-back champs in the fall and winter, and I know they wanted that third one to round out the grand slam, but Forest View Elementary 5th graders took the spring victory. And our friends at Forest View are unable to join us tonight. They have a fine arts fair and spring concert, but we are happy to recognize them publicly here tonight. So please join me in congratulating these very smart mathematicians.
Which one do you want to start with?
Yes, Sunnyside. Sunnyside first. Yep, perfect. Yeah. Okay, ready, look right here, one, two, three. Awesome. Perfect. Is there any parents for this group? Come on up. Arbor Creek. Yep, Mrs. Flowers couldn't be here. Right here, one, two, three. Three.
Congratulations, you guys.
Well, up next, we are pleased to recognize our students in the Olathe West CBR program, so please come on up, students, along with your Principal Jay Novacek, your teacher, Mr. Jonathan Stahl, and Special Services Transition Coordinator Amanda Honaker. Come on down. Well, as they get settled, I will let you know that this team of rock star students won second place in the Job Olympics competition. For those who don't know, Job Olympics is a competition developed to promote transition and employability skills for a broad spectrum of high school students. Job Olympics brings together over 500 students from 40 different schools throughout the area. Competitions representing actual job and employment situations are judged by business professionals from the community and professionals in education. At the award ceremony, these Olathe West students were recognized with ribbons, medals, and trophies, and we are so incredibly proud of you guys. Congratulations. Okay, everybody look right here. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Thank you.
You get a parent? Yep.
In addition to our academic all-stars, we are also excited to recognize several of our state athletic champions tonight. At this time, I'd like to invite our District Athletic Director Matt Johnson up to the front, along with Brett Carroll, Jacob Vasquez, Nicole Redmond, and Principals Carrie Lane, Sean Demery, and Assistant Principal Camille Zimmerman. Just wrestling, yep. Okay, awesome. So, we are pleased to recognize three repeat state wrestling champions tonight and welcome a new champ to the mix as well. Olathe East Senior Brett Carroll capped off an undefeated season with his second state title in the 285-pound division, and he is now the most decorated male athlete in Olathe East history. Wow. Olathe South Senior Nicole Redmond won her fourth straight state title, and she is one of three Kansas girls to make history this season, winning four straight state titles for the first time in the history of the Kansas State High School Activities Association. So awesome. And then our, our North friends, not here, or here? Not here, okay. Well, we will still celebrate them publicly, so we had two rock star Olathe North athletes. Kalen Hitchcock won her second straight title in the 135-pound division, and we also have Jacob Vasquez, who is a first-time champ this year. So very proud of them as well. Congratulations, you guys. Thank you, guys. Okay, well, one Olathe North champion who I do believe is here is Joe Olet, so I will have him come up along with Assistant Principal Camille Zimmerman. So Joe won his first state bowling title in the Class 6A Boys State Bowling Championship after bowling a 7:37 in a three-game series. With a very close finish, Joe stepped up when it mattered most, bowling three straight strikes in the 10th frame to clinch the state title. Please join me in congratulating Joe on this exciting accomplishment. And finally, we would like to honor several students from our Olathe Advanced Technical Center who placed at the Health Occupations Students of America, or HOSA, competition. So could Addie Johnson, Mackenzie Kelso, and Calista Alferson join us at the front with Administrator Amy Stoles and your instructor? In March, these students joined kids from across Kansas who are interested in pursuing a career in healthcare at the annual HOSA competition. Addie and Mackenzie both placed first as a team in the EMT competition, and Calista earned second place in the Medical Terminology Competition. I will share that Addie recently added a few more accolades to her resume after competing at the Skills USA State Championship this past weekend, and she earned gold in the First Aid CPR competition and silver in extemporaneous speaking. So we are so proud of you guys. All right, that wraps up our recognitions for tonight.
Thank you, Becky. All right, moving on to agenda item 4.01. Board, we have three presentations this evening. The first one is going to be our school spot white, and I'd like to welcome Principal Sean Demery to the podium for Olathe South.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Dr. Agers, Board, President Boyd. Appreciate you inviting me here tonight. You know, as an Olathe North graduate, I have to tell you that tonight I am honored to represent the best high school in Olathe Public Schools, Olathe South. You know, I say that. I say that, I look across the room, I know some of my colleagues are here tonight from the other high schools, and I firmly believe there is no better high school education than what you can receive in Olathe Public Schools at all five high schools, and I am humbled by the other four principals I get to call colleagues. But this year, Olathe South, we've been in a time of reflection and a time of growth. And over the past few years, South has gone through a few moments of trials. And one thing we knew we wanted to do was to bring back a sense of pride to the South side of Olathe. So whenever I have a chance to stand before a group and say, "We are the best," I want you to know from the bottom of my heart, I mean it. Olathe South High School is the very best high school in the state of Kansas. And there's reasons for that. I'm going to point out a few of them tonight that we're rather proud of. South Side's the best side because our math, ACT, and Kansas Assessments continue to be the highest in the district among the high schools. Our teachers who teach math push our students beyond their limits to perform at levels that exceed college and career readiness standards. We're really proud of our math at South. We have been able to place a priority on highly effective professional learning communities at South. Our teachers meet on a weekly basis, many of them choosing and volunteering to meet above and beyond what their contract asks them to do, and that is absolutely amazing to see teachers and paraeducators and other educators in our building joining together to meet and push what we're able to do educationally at South. And overall, I guarantee you, if you come to South and stop by any of our 125 classrooms, you will see amazing instruction. I am confident that Olathe South has the best teachers that Kansas has to offer. So confident, anytime, even the last four weeks of school, you can stop on by and see great teaching. I say that, but I also think part of being the best side of Olathe is being able to stand up and say, "We've got some growth to do." And that's part of being the best, is to be able to reflect and find those areas where we've got to grow and improve. In Olathe South, three of those areas that we've recognized this year is our overall culture and climate of our building. As I said, we're working to get that pride back at South. And we made some great strides this year, I'm going to talk about that in a minute, but it's a place we want to continue to grow. An area for our learning is how we address diversity, equity, and inclusion inside our building. How do we celebrate our diverse population and create a school where every student, every single student feels welcoming, welcomed, walking into our doors and sitting in our classrooms? And lastly, our English scores. Our math scores are where we want them to be. English has some room for growth. So we continue to work on that, and we've had some teachers come together to make some strides in English, including this year alone, we had a drop from 26% of our sophomores failing English down to below 5%. Our teachers are committed, and that's why we're the best side of Olathe. Part of our reflection and growth this year has been getting back to our gold standard. We're blue and gold. Nothing better than gold. So we've been talking about how do we get back to that? We talked about setting a new vision for our community. So this year, we started off by telling our staff that this is our priority. We are Olathe South High School, and we are an inclusive learning environment that prepares students for college and careers, celebrates our diverse community, and creates a culture of belonging and pride in being a Falcon for all students. That's our guiding light every day. That we're creating a space that celebrates diversity, that is inclusive for every single one of our students, and we get our students ready for college or careers, whatever path they choose to follow, we are there to get them to their dreams. We started making some investments, investing in our partnerships and our relationships. There's one group I want to point out tonight that's called 4OS. Again, I've got the best teachers, and I've got a group of teachers, one with me tonight, Christopher Adam over here, Adam Christopher. I'm used to seeing your name in reverse on schedules. This group of teachers came together to start something unique, an opportunity to invest in our staff around pride and around connection. They come together and create opportunities to celebrate. School Pride Weeks that are for the teachers only, not for the students. Teachers dressing up and having a good time at a high school in April, in May. That alone has had the greatest impact on what we are doing at South in creating pride and creating a space where staff feel welcome in our building, and that's not me, that's not my fellow administrators. That is a group of teachers that are doing that as volunteers. And that is an amazing thing about South. We've been pushing a new focus on instructional leadership at South. I am confident that you will not find another school in our district with a more active administration team. We push ourselves to be in the classrooms every single day. If you walk by one of our offices and you see a principal in there, we'll tell them, "Go." You gotta go. I know you're busy, but you're more important to be in the classroom right now. They're attending PLCs. We've shifted our admin meetings to be focused on data and to think about how do we make decisions that's based on what's best for our students. I'm proud of my fellow administrators. And last, we've been investing in our student needs, socially, emotionally, and of course, academically. This year, we brought in a therapy dog to Olathe South. Next school year, every 9th grade at Olathe South is going to be trained in mental health first aid in a partnership with Johnson County Mental Health. We want our students to be sound and safe so they can focus on their learning and not be worried about everything else that goes on in the lives of a high school. Last thing we did this year is we redefined what it actually means to be a Falcon. There used to be this list at South that was literally 13 to 14 principals long, long enough that the adults in the building couldn't actually recite them, let alone the 1,800 students. So we said, "Let's simplify that." We have three priorities for our students. Number one, treat everyone like family. Take care of one another. We sat with all 1,800 students at the start of the year, and we said, "We get it. We're not all going to get along. I've got five siblings myself. We don't all get along, but we will take care of each other. And when one of us goes through something troubling, or we're hurt, or we're celebrating, your fellow Falcons will be right there with you." We said, "We're going to focus on winning in the classroom." We talked to our students about the value of their educations, not just about us being the best high school or being ranked as top in the state of Kansas, it's about your diploma. Giving your diploma more power because you are brilliant students who show up in the classroom. We finally talked about winning in the community, giving back to our community. We started this year off by doing community service with all of our staff going out around the South side of Olathe and giving back to the community, it's given a lot to us. And then, of course, we also want in the community, we want a four-time state champion at wrestling. That's pretty impressive. We want to win on the field. We want to win on the stage. We want to win in the classroom, and that's what it means to be a Falcon. So I want to show you just a quick sample of what you can see at Olathe South. Amazing learning, wonderful athletes, beautiful performances, a principal who wears gold shoes on a daily basis. Every photo up here is taken by an Olathe South student. We are proud. We are proud of who we are at Leitha South, and I'll say it again, we are the best side of Leitha. So I want to share with you a few things that we saw this year, our improvements. We saw an improved system for students feeling supported and welcomed at South. We introduced new ways for students to reach out for help, and we're responding within 24 hours of every single response that students reach out academically, socially, emotionally, and harassment as well. We've increased our response time to make sure students know we are 100% here for them. That also includes that active principal move. My officer's over here tonight, too, Officer Yeagers. Can we give a round of applause for him over here? Right by our side, active with us, even attending board meetings. Thank you, Dr. Yeager. We had a notable shift in staff morale. If you walk in our building, you can feel it. You can feel the difference when you're at South from last year, the year prior, to this year. Our students even talk about it, you can see in the back some of them nodding their heads. We have come together as a team to support one another, and we know as adults that when we're having fun and we're enjoying our jobs as educators, our students are going to enjoy their jobs as students, and that's been a priority for us. We've had an increased celebration of diversity. We've got room to grow, more things we want to do. But we made sure our students knew that who they are matters to us. We pushed our students to litter our hallways with signs that celebrate who they are. We have flags up in our comments celebrating where our students come from. And we pushed our teachers to think about their teaching and how can they increase the perspectives of multiple cultures within their classrooms, and they rose to that challenge and continue to ask, "What do we do next?" We had a 69% increase in applied algebra students shifting to the college and career-based math track. 69% of our applied algebra students will enroll in Algebra I next year as sophomores. That's an increase from 0% last year. Only 41 of our nearly 500 freshmen need continued support and fluency. We're working on our reading scores, we're going to get to where we should be. And as I said, I have a new number, I put 8% in the slide, that was a week ago, we're now below 5% of our sophomores failing English in the 10th grade. That's a decrease from 25% just in the first semester. Next year, we're going to continue to focus on culture and climate, that will continue to be priority one for our students. We want them to know that our school believes in them and wants them to be with us, and we will take care of them each and every day. We will continue to move towards instructional leadership with priority on supporting our teachers. I told my administrators, they ought to go figure out how to get in classrooms more often. If you see me at South, I have a walking desk. I'm trying to give up my office so I can be in the hallways, I'm pushing my assistant principals to do the same. We know that when we're in the hallways and in classrooms, that is when we're going to be able to take care of our students and support our teachers. And finally, it says becoming, but we're going to continue to be Leitha's best high school. At Leitha South, we have a tradition. When we win, or when we occasionally lose, we always join together. We put our arms around one another, and we join together in the singing of our alma mater. So tonight, I'm inviting a group of our singers from Leitha South Choirs under the direction of Elise Peterson to lead us through that tradition so you could experience what it means to be a Falcon. And if you are a South alumni or a South teacher currently, or a paraeducator, or a custodian, anyone else who's here tonight that represents the South community, you are more than welcome to join us up here to sing our alma mater with us. And with that, Board, I thank you for tonight and letting me be the spotlight school for the board meeting.
(Singing) O, Lake of South, we honor you with pride and loyalty. Fraternity and strength abound for all the world to see. Loyal to our colors and hope, our bound in spirit, oh Lord. O, Lake of South, we honor you today and evermore.
I was going to try to sneak out with you.
Board, are there any questions for Mr. Dimmery, besides his shoes? Dr. Vorkovich?
I don't have a question, but just a comment. Appreciate you, your leadership, your enthusiasm, the energy, the honest honesty tonight in where South has been and where it's going, and I would just also say good luck the next high school principal meeting you go into. Thank you.
Board, any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, good. I'm going to go celebrate with my singers.
All right, Board, moving on to 4.02, we have a presentation from State Board of Education member Ann Ma. And welcome to Leitha. You can use that podium right there to my left.
Well, thank you so much. That's a hard act to follow, but I have to say, my friend Chris Meyer is a South alum, and I think since she chickened out, she ought to have to get up here and sing it all by herself. There you go. Just want to thank you guys so much for giving me a few minutes tonight. With the redistricting in 2022, I picked up about 20% of Leitha, so I'm trying to get around and meet some of my new school districts, and it's been fun getting to know more about Leitha and what you do. I love what you're doing with Career and Tech Ed. I came over to visit Leitha West right before it opened a few years ago to just see what was going on. It was so amazing, all that green technology and all that stuff. I don't know how they do it without lockers, but anyway. So there you go. And I want to thank you for the work you're doing on those common benchmark assessments because that's just really going to serve the whole state. Enjoyed hearing about that. I just wanted to introduce you to me a little bit tonight. My job on the State Board is to do what's best for kids and families all across Kansas. I'm the cheerleader and the policymaker. My background is a former teacher, actually 50 years ago this spring, I finished my first year of teaching high school science, and then I got tired of being broke, so I became an engineer, went to work for the phone company. But after retiring there, I was served in the Kansas House for eight years, and now I'm finishing up my second term on the State Board of Education. I am so grateful for what you do here because this is where the rubber meets the road, and I want you to know that my biggest job is to remove roadblocks for you so you can do your job better. And that's my main reason for being here tonight, just to let you know, put a face with the name and know how you can get hold of me, and call me anytime you need me. So what are we up to at the State Board? Well, way more than I can cover in just a few minutes. I'm also one of the two liaisons from the State Board to the legislature, so you can imagine how much fun that was. We've been mostly testifying the last few months and lobbying and playing defense for kids and schools. I'm sure you know that's been a battle, but on the whole, I think this year we came out okay. A big piece of legislation, as you're probably familiar, Senate Bill 387, is headed to the governor for signature. It's an agglomeration of seven other bills that included both policy and funding for K-12 education. Besides approving the Gannon ordered funding plus inflation, we got a $73 million bonus in new special education funding, and it is new. The legislature failed to decide how to distribute that funding and left that job to us, but I think our plan will do well for Leitha, and we're going to discuss that at the next board meeting and hopefully have some numbers for you. So nothing official, but the biggest thing is that they did not get to use their voodoo math and start using your local option budget contribution towards special ed as counting toward the state's contribution, and that's a good thing. There is an at-risk accountability plan in this bill with some new reporting. You may be familiar with the at-risk reporting that you get now, it's a little complicated and not always handy, and we're hopeful that this new pilot will produce some results that will help us better manage and move forward on at-risk students. I think the best is, and part of that, is that we did get rid of the owner's law that had the strict requirements on what you could and could not spend your at-risk funding on. So now the board list that we approved, 150 or so programs that you can spend your money on, I think will serve us all very well. There was also an agreement on how to count students that will help both growing and shrinking districts for at least the next year. They made some adjustments to their foray into helping districts dispose of real property. We'll see how that works out. I'm actually quite concerned about what the Education Funding Task Force that was created in this bill might come up with. Some of you may know that in 2027, the current school funding formula expires, so they will be rewriting that formula. We actually, right now, have one of the best education funding formulas in the nation. I mean, we, it's just really good, and sometime maybe we can talk about why that is good because I think in 2027, we might want to just lobby to keep the funding formula that we have because it's fair and equitable, and it really tries to cover a lot of bases. You've likely heard that the State Board is reworking our KISA accreditation model. We hope that by focusing on fewer things and doing them better, that we will better connect the school improvement idea and student success. We expect to vote on some changes to that this summer. We're also focused like a laser on literacy. Back in 2019, the State Board of Ed adopted the recommendations of the Dyslexia Task Force, you may be familiar with those, that included a move for all school districts towards structured literacy. We did everything we could do, but the legislature did not fund the training that we needed to really make the thing move forward. We were also asked in 2020 with, you know, COVID going on, to delay implementation of structured literacy, and we said, "No, this is too important. We could not put it off even one more year." But because of COVID, the State Board of Ed had some discretionary federal funding, ESER funding, and we took $15 million of that and invested in free letters training for all elementary teachers, all teachers who have to do, teach reading, special ed teachers, and now we've moved that up to eighth grade. So we're hopeful that, we even offered it to college professors because, you know, we want teachers coming to the field knowing this. But we're really hopeful, and I know that you guys have really been doing a great job, you're way ahead of the curve on moving towards structured literacy, and school districts that have done that have really seen a boost in their reading scores. But we have to move faster, and to that end, the State Board plans to make some requirements for elementary teachers who teach reading to be qualified in structured literacy in order to renew their license in about three years. I'm not totally sure what that will look like, but we expect to have some testing options where you could test out if you're already trained in structured literacy, and some, again, free training on letters, but also some shorter training opportunities. As you know, letters is like 180 hours of training for teachers, and not everybody has that kind of time, but there are other options. But it's just so important that every teacher know the best way to teach reading, and we just got to get serious about it. My last thoughts are that elections have consequences, and five State Board seats are up for election this year, including mine. We have 10 State Board members, and this election will be critical in how we move forward and what we focus on. Let me mention a few votes that involve Leitha, and keep in mind that we have to have six votes yes to pass anything, just like you have to have four, I assume, to pass anything. The mental health initiative, I heard you guys talk about it tonight, we all know, after especially coming through COVID, how important mental health initiatives are in our schools. Leitha had nearly $600,000 in funding on the line, and the vote was just seven to three. $65,000 per year homeless kids and their families passed only six to four, and the funding for that common benchmark assessment work you're doing passed with just six votes. So I encourage you to ask folks who are running for State Board this year what they're running for, and make sure you're asking all the questions so that you know that they're going to serve your kiddos the best because it really matters. A party doesn't matter, but policy does, and so we really need to be talking to folks who are going to be running for these seats. With that, I wanted to leave a few minutes if you had any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Board, any questions for State Board of Education member, Mrs. Ma? Mrs. Dill?
Yeah, and I'd just like to tell you thank you for your service. You've been a great advocate for public education all over the state, but especially in Topeka, and that is headache inducing at times. I think you said playing defense, and that is how it often feels up there. So thank you very much for your service to our kids in Kansas.
Well, you're welcome. It's been a pleasure. I sometimes think everything I've done from that first year of teaching to everything brought me to this moment, and it's been a blessing really just to get to serve, so. My email address is amah@ksde.org, A-M-A-H@ksde.org. If you think of questions later, feel free to write, and I'll write you back. And again, thank you so much for your time.
I do have one quick question.
Yes.
The $73 million number that you mentioned, is that tied to special education?
Yes, that's just for special education. Our thought is that we would distribute that, and I think Dr. Yeager may have the printout that I think that Frank Harwood, Dr. Harwood was handing out. We, our thought right now is that we would distribute that proportionately to what you're getting now. So this would be a lot of money for Leitha, so.
Thank you. Board, any last questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving on to 4.03, we have a kindergarten planning and program update from Dr. Jill Smith.
Good evening, Board. It is a difficult act to follow from South, I am just going to tell you that right now, but we get to talk about the opposite end of the spectrum. So we get to talk about kindergarten and really turning school readiness into school success. So I want to introduce the two next to me. We have Brandy Michaelis, and she's the instructional coach for early childhood and kindergarten. And then Dr. Kim Hawkins, you get to read her reports every month, right? And she's the director of early childhood. Several others that aren't with us tonight, but I wanted to give them credit for the work of doing some changes with kindergarten. We have Dr. Scott Fluke, and he's our PBIS facilitator or coordinator. We have Angie Salva, she's the director of SEL and mental health. And then we had Sarah Dilde and Kristen Lyon, SCR program facilitators. So we really are turning school readiness into school success, and we made two changes. One change already occurred on April 11th, and the next change will occur in August. So I'm going to turn it over to Kim Hawkins.
This slide will look familiar to you, these are the State Board of Education goals. Probably almost 10 years ago in 2015, when the Kansas Department of Education identified kindergarten readiness as a State Board goal, first of all, all of us in early learning were so excited to see that as a State Board goal. But at the time, Dr. Randy Watson shared that the largest gap we have academically, behaviorally, emotionally, happens on day one, when those kindergartners walk in to that first day of school. We continue to see this gap in Leitha, and tonight, as just as Dr. Smith shared, we're here to tell you about a couple of exciting things that we've put together to make this transition better for our students, our families, and our educators. Right now, we have a little over 600 students who are part of our Leitha Early Childhood Programs that will start in kindergarten in the fall. We have many more students that will head into kindergarten in August that haven't been part of our Leitha Early Childhood Program. So our goal this spring and summer and as we head into August is to get to know as much about those students and their families as we can. So that goal there, just to create multiple opportunities to allow us to get to know our incoming kindergarten students and their families, just so we can make the best decisions possible and get them that best start possible as they start, as they start their elementary career and their school career. Tonight, we're going to highlight two important pieces that we have to events that we've had, as Dr. Smith said, the first one being a few weeks ago at kindergarten enrollment. So Brandy's going to take it away and talk to you about some exciting things that happened a few weeks ago.
I've got cute kid pictures for you to see. That's what we all want to see, right? So like Kim mentioned, we had kindergarten enrollment on April 11th, and we welcomed 1,600 new kindergartners, and we're so excited to see them in August. Of course, they thought school started August 12th for kindergarten because, you know, they think once they come to school, they're officially there. But we're excited to welcome them in August. We did make a change this year and shifted the name from kindergarten roundup to kindergarten
We did make a change this year and shifted the name from kindergarten roundup to kindergarten enrollment, just trying to make it feel like it's something fancy you do. We had kids dressed to the nines, as you'll see in the pictures, really ready to come to that enrollment day. What a special, you know, first experience with school. We had lots, we tried to increase our advertising with our community partners, our local daycares, and our families, and we did see our attendance increase from last year. So we're just going to keep those efforts going of advertising when the enrollment day is and getting as many of our students in, because that gives us that first chance to get to know kids. We had district personnel go out and visit all 36 sites on April 11th and only reported back all these wonderful pictures, but really happy, excited kids. And then teachers in schools that really made a welcoming, warm environment for our families, kind of like first impression as they come to school. Okay, more kid pics, because one slide's not enough, right? In an effort to create some consistency amongst our schools, we really asked teachers to kind of create some similar experiences school to school. So you would find every school doing some kind of read aloud and just letting kids listen to a story. You'll see we had principals joining in for this part of the fun, which is always a great time. We also had students, of course, wanting to get to play with new peers. They need to start making those friendships, and then just seeing how kids are interacting with each other during play. It's what they do best, right? We had opportunities for kids, of course, some wonderful photo opportunities, look at that. And then kids were able to draw their cute little self-portraits and show us how they write their name, things like that. I just really want to say thank you to all of our kindergarten teachers and our schools, because they really did such a nice job of welcoming our students in on this day.
Oh, yes.
So we also wanted to share some great feedback that we received, too. Since this was kind of our first time to have some consistency across all 36 of our elementary buildings, we thought it was important to get some feedback. So things that we heard first, we want to give a huge plug for our early childhood educators that helped to support our kindergarten teachers. They were so critical to what happened during that day, and so for those of you that don't know, we decided to suspend and not have early childhood that day so that they could go and help to support our kindergarten. I have to tell you, some of those friends, those 600 friends that were coming from early childhood, we're thrilled to see some of their teachers that they already knew in the room with the kids. So that was a great feedback. The flow was much better with having scheduled one-hour appointments. It was great to be able to spread out our families. All the families got the time that they wanted to come, which was great. But when you think about Manchester Park with having 86 students come through during that 1:00 to 6:00 o'clock time, that was pretty impressive. The other thing, too, is we did have some families that participated previously in our kindergarten roundup that came to kindergarten enrollment, and they just talked about how impressed they were. They thought it was really organized. Kids went one way. We could see if they could separate from mom or dad, or family and parents, or if parents could separate from their kids, too. That was kind of important, too. And so it was just much more organized, and then some buildings even had their PTO to be able to answer questions right at the beginning of the year, some community partners that were part of that, too. And then principals also had the opportunity to talk to families about the importance of attendance every single day. Good, good feedback. All right, so we shared our first event, which was kindergarten enrollment. And then the second one we have that we're looking forward to is in August, we'll be welcoming all of those 1,600-plus students back to school for camp kindergarten. So in the 24-25 school year, our students will spend their first three and a half days coming to camp in kindergarten. What that means is we will not have assigned teacher class lists made, but instead, students will get to interact with a multitude of teachers, support staff, and their fellow peers, as they really just get to start to know their school environment, right? Start to build those connections and find, thank you, the people that they are connecting with in their school. Of course, there's going to be all the normal things that happen during the first few days of kindergarten. Kids will be spending a lot of time playing, right? They'll be getting to meet their teachers, listening to stories, and then, oh, figuring out the lunch routine. And if you have not been to kindergarten on the first day in the lunchroom, I invite you out. It is a fun place to be. Many of our schools, I think about 2/3 of our schools, have been doing camp kindergarten for years, and they really see great benefit from it. I know it's a lot of work in planning and organization, but the benefits are in the fact that they are getting to know all of these incoming students, really getting to know a strong foundation for them, and then being very intentional. We know kids before we are able to make class lists and really give those kids a good, strong, successful foundation, not only to just kindergarten, but like Kim mentioned, their whole school career. So it's something we're really excited about, again, bringing that consistency piece to not just some of our buildings, but all of our buildings for our youngest little learners. We did share this information with families at kindergarten enrollment so that they could start to prepare for that. And then official teacher assignments will be created and shared with families on that first Friday, so that families have the weekend to prepare and come in for that more traditional Monday first-day drop-off experience in kindergarten. One of the nice things about kindergarten camp that I just want to mention, too, is even though we had over 1,600 students come for kindergarten enrollment, we know that there's still kindergartners out there that will still arrive, right? And so this also gives us another opportunity for three and a half days to really see how do they interact and play and do those kinds of things with other students that we may not have seen before in enrollment. So finally, we always want to connect it back to our strategic framework, and the two pillars that we really thought about when we were planning these two changes were the high expectations, academic expectations for all, and we want to hit the ground running, even with our five-year-olds. And then the other part is the behavior and social-emotional development of our students, which was one of the reasons that we made some of these changes, too. And when you think about it, we want to hit the ground running for our class of 2037. So then, any questions that you might have for the three of us?
Are there any questions? Mrs. Reagan?
Well, I don't have questions. I just have some comments. And I had the privilege of being at kindergarten enrollment at my children's school, and I went through enrollment, I have a second grader and first grader, so enrollment is very fresh in my mind. I just have to say, even with parents who didn't have incoming kindergartners, the change in language from roundup to enrollment put a kind of importance and formality on the event. I also think, as far as the translation between languages, roundup doesn't translate in the same clear, smooth way that enrollment does. And so I think that is just a great way for us to meet our community where we are with our 80-plus languages. Enrollment is probably more of a direct, translatable work. It was just, it was so good to not have the rush. I remember as a kindergarten parent, it was just kind of a whirlwind, and it was pick up this paper, pick up that paper, fill out this paper, talk to the nurse. This was so much more relaxed. It was so much more of a dialogue, conversation between the principal and the parents. So the attention to changing something for the better. I know the organization piece was probably more difficult, because it was the first time, but having watched it, two different rounds of it in the same afternoon, it was just great. And the camp kindergarten thing is new for our building in the way that you all are changing it. I think, I mean, I am excited to see how it goes. You know, buildings, they know the kids that are going into the other grades, because they've been in their building, and you're able to figure out those dynamics better with placements. And what a great way to set up our kids and our staff for success. I don't have a question. I am just amazed and so impressed. And if you don't, you go to enrollment next year. It's great.
I don't have a question either, and I'm not as quite at the level that Claire is, but I never am. No, but I spent an afternoon at one of the elementary schools also to just observe and interact, and it was so fun to be with kindergartners. And you know, your example of this one young man who came with his hair slicked down and parted, and he had older siblings, so he was very comfortable. And then another little guy who didn't want to separate from mom, and the staff at the school went and got older sister to spend some time with him in the kindergarten room. I'm impressed with how strategic and intentional this process has been, both with the enrollment, but also with the kindergarten camp. I know some schools have been doing that, and I just think it's so good for the kids and the staff, not just that first year, but as they continue through school. So kudos to all of you. I started to kind of list how many people involved, but there are too many. So kudos to the leadership and to the work that you've done with these, yeah.
Mr. Mabit?
I'm mostly going to echo what these two said, but I happened to completely randomly be at Millbrook during kindergarten roundup.
Enrollment.
Enrollment.
It's okay, we still slipped, too.
And I'd never actually been a part of it before, because my son wasn't here in kindergarten, but it was a well-oiled machine, just, they had the table set up, parents were going through each one, they got an extended time with the principal, who was able to interact with them, tell them about the next year, and the kids were having a great time with the kindergarten teachers. It was just, it was great to see, so that's all.
Board, any other questions or comments? I do have a quick one, both to Dr. Smith and Dr. Harrison. I know this was a heavy lift to get 36 buildings on the same page, and I know in some of our meetings, we talked about consistency and to have those predictive outcomes, and the experience for our students and the experience for our parents. So I appreciate the lift and the work that you guys have done to provide the consistency for our kindergarten students and our parents, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comments, 5.01. Mrs. Still?
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals to address the board. We ask that your comments be germane, that is related to the business this board effectuates. Noncompliance may result in the president interrupting to redirect. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the three-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the board and not the guests or staff. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Audience disruption is also not permitted. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name, city and state, and relationship to the district. Thank you.
All right, our first speaker this evening is Whitney Schmely.
Good evening. My name is Whitney Schmely. I'm the lead counselor at Olathe East High School. I've been a part of the HAWK community for 27 years, as a chemistry teacher, as a counselor, and as a parent. It's May, and that means it's Mental Health Awareness Month. In 2019, the high schools in the district were fortunate enough to have a student wellness advocate and mental health expert added to our staff. This was a much-needed position, as our school counselor loads well exceed recommended limits. While school counselors have training in mental health, by no means are we therapists. We help students deal with personal and social issues that may affect their academic success, but we all know that the mental health needs of our students run much deeper than that. Many of our students need Tier 2 and Tier 3 services. These services are best provided by people our students have a relationship with, someone they see on a regular basis, someone they have a connection with. The SWAs in our buildings allowed our students and staff to develop these relationships and allowed our students a level of comfortability that they otherwise would not have had. Two years ago, the decision was made to remove these mental health professionals from our high school buildings. Olathe East was fortunate enough to hang on to ours until now. This is not my plea to allow Olathe East to keep our student wellness advocate. This is my plea for you all to evaluate the impact of removing those SWAs from the high school, the effect that they have had on the number of students that they can serve. Removing SWAs, now called mental health professionals, and placing them in an off-site district building does not allow for these individuals to maintain any kind of ongoing relationship with students. The data I've been able to obtain about the MHPs indicate that of the five MHPs that oversee 52 school buildings, they have seen 2.5 students per school over the last school year. They are not seeing any more students during the months of April and May, because there isn't enough time for them to develop a relationship with the student before the end of the school year. Our MHP at Olathe East has seen an average of over 160 students individually for each of the last three years. He's made over 22 classroom presentations per year, and he has given professional development for staff each of the last three years. He is in the hallways at the front door every morning greeting students, and all in an effort to build relationships with students and staff to help them feel comfortable talking about and dealing with mental health. The reason we were given the district, the reason that we were given that the district originally provided the MHPs to our high school buildings to begin with is the number of suicides. While we have been fortunate enough to have a reduction in the number of suicides, removing active mental health supports from our buildings is a recipe for disaster. I urge you to look at the numbers of students and the district's MHPs are affecting, and I urge you to place them back into the high schools on a daily basis. I understand the need to be able to cover additional schools, but keeping them from being in a building with the students that they are serving just doesn't make sense. Our district website states, many schools also have mental health therapists onsite to provide therapy to students. Unfortunately...
Ms. Schmely, your term's expired. Thank you.
Thank you. May I provide these letters to the board? These are from another staff member in our building. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Molly Creviston.
Hello, I'm Margaret Creviston, or Miss Molly at Olathe East, where I'm a proud CBR2, Level 2 paraprofessional. I'm a Lenex resident for 17 years and parent of a Canyon Creek 5th grader, who incidentally has been, won the school spelling bee three times in a row. I urge you to recognize our union, CWA Local 6400, Olathe School Workers United. It is imperative that board members and administration see us, hear us, and listen to our voices. We hear far too often that we are the backbone of our schools, but our pay does not reflect the level of professionalism required of our jobs. Pairs are consistently understaffed and overworked, inadequately educated about specific disabilities and how they manifest in students' learning or behavior. Our hours are insufficient to appropriately meet with case managers, let alone check email. Staff exist in heightened survival mode, leading to burnout and chronic absenteeism. Constant staff turnover is detrimental to students who require consistent routines and educator relationships. We deserve respect and compensation, which underscores the importance and legal right to a free and appropriate public education to students with disabilities. Recent roundtable discussions felt hastily arranged, with the first scheduled at 3:00. High schools dismiss at 3:00, middle school 3:10, and elementary at 3:40. I was able to attend only because the medically fragile student I support was hospitalized due to his disability. The 90-minute meeting held only 15 minutes of actual discussion. We love deeply the students we support. We celebrate their victories and squeeze a hand through disappointments. We help them forge meaningful, lasting relationships with their teenage peers and advocate for inclusion everywhere. We hand-feed some students their lunch, must remember dietary restrictions, allergies, and who must be prompted to finish a snack to prevent a diabetic or insulin reaction. We remind students the social importance of using a tissue as opposed to their shirt or finger. We provide dignity and assistance for nervous young women changing their menstrual pads. Aid young men with mobility challenges to direct their urine into the toilet. We change soiled garments and clean students after a bowel movement, always respectfully, professionally, and with dignity. We are slapped, punched, spat upon, and many times worse, because we see our students. We hear them, and we've got them. And more importantly, we wash our hands and head to American Black History, Porticulture, or whatever class in general ed they attend. Make no mistake, these are not complaints. This is our job. We are the inclusion revolution, and we love... We are the inclusion revolution and we love our students exactly as they are. And for the job I love, my take on pay is less than $12,000 a year, accompanied by a $6,400 medical deductible. You misunderstand my passion and love for the students I serve to be a noble cause. I'm not an angel or a saint. I'm a professional educator fighting for dignity.
Ma'am, your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dawn LaMester.
I am a CBR para at Walnut Grove Film and, and I have been a para for about 20 years. I live in Lewisburg, Kansas with my daughter Hillary and her family because I can't afford to live on my own. My two children went through Olathe East, or through the Olathe School District and graduated from Olathe East. I am here tonight representing our union, CWA Local 6400, Olathe School Workers United. I am speaking to you tonight to answer some of your questions. My coworker Amber sent responses to the questions you had at the last meeting, which I believe Dr. Jaeger has or will share with you later. I wanted to just quickly share a few things about our union. Our local, CWA Local 6400, was formed by para educators, custodians, food service workers, grounds and maintenance workers, and other hourly staff in Lawrence Public Schools. We are joining CWA Local 6400 because we are already to be a part of a movement of classified school staff in Kansas. We want you to know that a union is simply a group of coworkers or multiple groups of workers that come together to fight for better conditions at work. Like my coworkers have said, we just want what the teachers have, a seat at work, or a seat at the table about the discussions that affect us and the opportunity to bargain over our wages and working conditions. Our union is the classified workers in Olathe Public Schools. It was said at the end of last month's board meeting that quote, "classified staff is the backbone of our system," end quote. This is true. Even Mrs. Reagan said, quote, "to our kids, a lot of you are everything to them," end quote. Without classified staff, minimal to no learning would get done. The building's grounds would be unfit to teach, learn in. The students would have to bring their own lunches, creating more financial burden for a lot of families, et cetera. The best way for us to be shown respect is for you to recognize our union and bargain with us to get a feasible living wage. This would show that what we do really matters. Regarding support, we need more workers. We are understaffed. The only way to get more people to work for the district is by paying them more. Help us help you to lobby the state for better wages as well as for special education needs. That would make a better learning experience for the students. The state government is sitting on a $4 billion surplus. We only need an eighth of that. United we stand, divided we fall. And when we fight, we win. Quando peleamos, ganamos. Thank you for giving us that information.
I am a VI para who also helps out in the CBR classroom. Um, I, I am at Olathe North. I have worked in the school district for four years. I have three kiddos that we have adopted. My youngest one is James. He is in fourth grade. The next one is Lillian. She is in fifth grade. And then I have Virginia that is in eighth grade. I want to thank the board so much for giving me their time today, for listening to me on my speech. I am here to speak upon the Union of CWA Local 6400, Olathe School Workers United. First, I would like to speak about wanting to speak about, um, wanting a union in order to have the classified staff so we can have the support. When we have an issue at work, I want all of us to have a seat at the table in helping to determine how the paras are trained and supported. I want to make sure that there is a clear procedure and evaluation and that we are given effective feedback so that we can improve our jobs. I want to recognize the union so that as a classified staff, we can have an organization ran by us that can support us at work. Second thing is that our health insurance. Our deductible keeps getting higher and higher, but our HSA's amount still stays the same. From our research, Superintendent Dr. Yager makes over $200,000 per year. Obviously, he has a very important job. With his salary, he can absorb the cost of his doctor bills. I only bring home $716 every paycheck per the spread. So it's harder for me to be able to pay my medical bills with a family of five. My coworkers and I would like to come together to be able to fight with, to fight for more funding for the public schools and the state so we can be able to have more money to be able to improve upon our insurance. Third is pay, obviously, everybody's going to be speaking about. I know that it's on everybody to say, but I feel that I could, if I could go to QuickTrip and get a job making $20 an hour, we should be making more. We do difficult jobs that require patience and skills that we deserve the pay that reflects. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education and coworkers. My name is Briselda Castellanos and I live in Olathe and I have worked for the district for 23 years. I am here to represent our union, the CWA 6400, Olathe School Workers. A little background about me, I have two kids, have been and gone through the school district, my oldest being a college graduate, and my youngest is still studying. I am a single mom. Today, I will speak to you with respect and hope to be here. First, I would like to talk about salary. The cost of life is double and often triple. Our wages are such an imbalance, it's not right or fair. Our salaries does not give us enough support. Many of us had to work two jobs because our salaries aren't enough. As I have, as I have mentioned, I have been in the district for 23 years and I have trained several people from that I have seen many people come and go and not stay because we, we don't get paid enough. We put in lots of work to keep our schools clean, work that is hard and work that not everyone wants to do or can do. Our current salary doesn't match the amount of work and effort we put in. We know school funding is a statewide issue and we are ready to work with you to fight for more funding from the state of Kansas. Second, I would like to talk about benefits. Allow, allow me to paint a bigger picture. We all receive the same benefits because we all have the same allowance to go see the doctor and pay a co-pay. However, the co-pay is of a universal salary that we then have to match. But we all don't make the same. Many of us, as custodians, we, we, we are living day by day, day to day. We don't have enough for us, such high co-pay. Co-pay should be related to the amount we each make. Sir, I want to mention how we as custodian get traded. I would like to see more appreciation and gratitude to the work we put in towards schools. In recent years, we have to feel excluded. Remember that not only the people behind the desks make up the district. We are grouped each with our own responsibilities and tasks to prepare buildings, offices, and classrooms for the children's every day. As members of the union, CWA, and 6,000 local Olathe School Workers, we are waiting for you to support our recognition to our union. I love to work the school. That's what I've been 23 years. So we're just asking for a little support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Sierra James and I'm a CBR para at Olathe North High. I am here to ask you to recognize our union, CWA Local 6400, Olathe School Workers United. I'm relatively new to this job, just under two years now. And before I came to North, I had worked in a few different fields and many different jobs. I've had jobs I hated and jobs I liked fine. This is the first job where I feel so at home and so fulfilled at my work. For the first time, I can truly say I love my job. I love education, learning, and teaching. Every day, my students bring me so much joy and my coworkers amaze me with their passion and dedication to the work and our students. Still, almost every day when I drive home, I have the thought in my head, maybe it's time to find a new job. A job that values me enough to pay a wage that keeps up with the cost of living. Three weeks ago, the district held roundtable meetings with classified staff. I went because I want to help administration so we can work together to provide the best possible outcome for our students. But in the end, it just felt like an attempt to assure us that we don't need a union, that they would listen to us without one. They gave us an hour and a half, but made sure to direct the conversation so we talked as much about why we love our jobs as we did about our frustrations. They let us talk for a bit, then sent us on our way. They let us talk, but we don't know if they listened. This is why we want a union. We have a voice and we want to use it. Those of us here with me today are here because we love this job enough to fight for it. One of the main things I heard at the roundtable, besides pay, was my fellow paras talking about the respect for our position. When I first took the job, the response from most people was asking if I was going to become a teacher. Partly, it's just because my friends and family believe I make a pretty good teacher. But it's also a testament to the fact that the job I have, the job I love, is seen by many as a stepping stone. And why shouldn't it? Our only way to advance to make anything near a livable wage is to become a teacher. And maybe that's just our problem. But that means your concern as the school board is, if you pay paras and aides, custodians and grounds workers, secretaries and kitchen staff less than they can make working in fast food, what does that mean for our students? To me, it sounds like we're shortchanging them. By recognizing our union, you recognize us as full partners with you in making our school district the best it can be for the staff and our students. Thank you for your time.
My topic is understanding. From a parent perspective, understanding what is intruding on our kids' education is of the utmost, utmost important and is very complicated. It is tough to determine the largest overstep outside the boundary of reading, writing, math, history, and science. Is the overstep in trauma books that induce trauma on all kids through assigned and choice reading? Books that don't have educational value unless you see fourth grade level for all beneficial when it induces the adoption of trauma? With additional trauma comes additional money. It is a destructive self-feeding cycle. Is the threat in explicit materials in the library, again with lower exile levels? Does the threat to education come from the NEA that cheers when their president upholds Marxist Angela Davis as someone to be revered? Marxists want to break everything down while pointing the finger at others. The threat could also most definitely come through NGOs through massive additions of Castle, from the Castle Company, funded by billionaires and politically motivated. Is the threat in reduced achievement scores on assessments? Does the bargain dropped again or does the assessment test change to get the changing desired goal? Which threat is most important depends on the goals of the day and who the schools are trying to please. With the at-risk label comes additional money. If you are not aware of the origins of Castle, they're with the Frankfurt School in Marxist Critical Theory. The UN says we need more Castle to help the children transform and accept any nonsense as truth. At the State Board in March, uh, the KSDE said that they've been working on revamping assessments for four years. Why are we adding another experimental test? Why Olathe, why the kids of Olathe are the Guinea pigs for money? $250,000 if you don't know. It used to be that my teacher friends were very opposed to assessments because they measured the effectiveness of the teacher. Now we hear nothing from the unions regarding this. I don't know why that is. Today, I would be opposed to the extra assessments, not because it measures the teacher or the proficiency, but really they measure the child's perceived potential and they collect data for some purpose. I don't understand why this is allowed to continue. Who are the stakeholders? It is not the parents and it is not the teachers since they are already have academic assessments, which are also currently being reworked by the same companies. Reading the little that is to be found on these companies, they will be of a psychoanalyzing nature. Psychometrics is a tried and true science for measuring traits and attitudes that are predictive of future behaviors. It is widely used by nearly all Fortune 500s for talent assessments and usually take the form of behavioral questionnaires or tests, which score the individual based on the responses. Uh, our State Board member just said that the board, only four out of six voted for this. They had zero information on what it was. There was nothing. You can't find anything on it. And they're proprietary, the previous ones are proprietary, parents can't see. Uh, they, they did say, well, yeah, we should probably work on that, try to figure out how to show parents. Well, maybe that is a really good idea, turn them in-house instead of for these companies that are for profit and hide them. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Barrios and I live in Olathe. You may recall, you may recall a brave 13-year-old boy speaking in this very spot back in November. His name is Emmett and he is my son. Quick refresher, he spoke about his experiences with bullying and isolation, which is just a fraction of his struggles. Fast forward, Emmett's class attendance dropped to 26%. He was in school, but unable to transition. Emmett advocated for what he needed and what made attending classes impossible, yet he still felt unheard. After school, Emmett would walk through the door feeling absolutely defeated. He couldn't even participate in his outside services for speech, OT, or mental health therapy. We met with Emmett's IAP team multiple times and asked the district to provide some appropriate placement options that fit Emmett's needs. Unfortunately, the only options given were not appropriate for Emmett. We found a school that's capable of fitting Emmett's needs, but it's not within our district. Emmett audited this school and it was like night and day. We asked our IAP team to consider the school for placement and were denied. You see, Emmett is a student who falls in the gray area and unfortunately, this evening's timer does not allow me to go into full detail. But to sum it up, he is a verbal autistic student without intellectual disability. He needs a singular, small setting class, or sorry, setting, classes with very small teacher-student ratios, individualized instruction, access to small-scale social opportunities, and more. In March, we unilaterally enrolled Emmett in the school he audited. Emmett is regularly attending, learning, making friends, joined a club, and he is thriving. I recently spoke about this at our community conversation meeting and when our superintendent acknowledged that schools like this are in business because they catch the students that can't be served, it gave me hopes that one day, this will change. The first step to change is acknowledgement of a problem or need and I applaud him for that acknowledgement. Meanwhile, we are- Meanwhile, we are having to pay for Emmett's education out of pocket and had to set up a GoFundMe to help cover legal representation, to help ensure Emmett can stay in this appropriate and life-saving educational setting. No family should have to go through these measures to receive fate, and it certainly shouldn't depend on financial privilege. Emmett deserves a chance to be a lifelong learner, eager to speak, or eager to seek out knowledge rather than a lifelong education survivor who avoids the reminders of the trauma he has experienced in schools thus far. Please see him, hear him, because he feels like you don't have him. Thanks.
Hello. When reflecting on what to update you with, I looked back at my first speech when I noticed my son shared that he got carried to an empty room with no windows and three adults who wouldn't stop talking. Ten IEP meetings later, and I experienced his team, or I expected his team to understand his high risk of mental health crisis and school avoidance that developed from multiple isolation events last year. In the spirit of collaboration, they agreed to use the problem-solving model instead of behavior compliance. As a team, we worked together to develop preventative supports on his BIP plan. It had a visual lanyard with sensory tools to regulate his body when he's overstimulated. Regulators were walking, getting a snack, and reading a book. One of my biggest concerns is there was a picture of an empty room. I actually started to cry in the meeting because it reminded me of what happened last year. They assured me it was a mistake and a miscommunication, and that now when he's dysregulated, he goes to a sensory gym. Last week, Aiden asked for a book during music, and he was directed to the small calm-down room with nothing in it for manifestations of his autism. Students should not be placed in a closet for needing a sensory tool to remain engaged with peers. He watched the footage himself, and he said, "I wish there was a camera in the closet so you could hear me asking for help to get out." I will continue to remind you the trauma seclusion causes autistic students. What we are teaching autistic students is it's not okay to be themselves, to use sensory tools around their friends. Teachers have shared with me they're uncomfortable supporting Aiden because they don't fully understand autism. Why are they uncomfortable? Because indirect services don't support staff with the least amount of autism knowledge. The most recent neurodivergent training was not provided to paraprofessionals. So we must be training the right teachers, all of our teachers, even our specials teachers and gen ed teachers. I asked KSDE to how many reports of seclusion are at my school this year, and they could not share the number because it's lower than 10. My son's team told me he's never been in that small calm-down room. My son said it wasn't true. The data shows there's under 10 seclusion incidents at my school. My son said that's impossible. I reviewed the footage myself, and now I believe my son and not my school. These incidents will not stop unless we train staff on the meaning of seclusion. A school personnel isolates the student and is not meaningfully engaged with them, and the student has no reason to believe they will be prevented from leaving the environment. Verbally directing a student to a seclusion room is still considered seclusion. A seclusion room should be a small, should be a place that's safe and looks like a room that students frequent all the time. Examples of seclusion is a student in a calm-down room with one staff member ignoring them and another with the door open. The solution is simple: follow state guidelines, focus on prevention. A calm-down room should not be a part of a behavior plan. It's only used for emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie Bosworth. I am an Olathe resident and a second-year para at Olathe East High School. My two sons graduated from Olathe East as well. I'm here to talk about paraprofessionals and all of the things we do to describe our, or to support our students in the district. The term "paraprofessional," while accurate as a school employee classification, is completely inadequate in describing everything we do each day. We are personal caregivers and hygiene instructors. We hand-feed students who cannot feed themselves. We help those who can navigate the school cafeteria, which is a pretty scary place. We assist students with diapering, toileting, and menstrual needs, and gently remind students that they may need to attend to their hygiene. We are behavior specialists. We get to know our students on a deeply personal level, understanding and avoiding their triggers, and learning the best strategies for de-escalation and redirection. We are advocates. We work with gen ed teachers to make sure all of our students are meaningfully included with their peers in class discussions, activities, and projects. We are tutors. We break down classroom teacher instruction into more manageable steps, repeat instructions to students who have trouble focusing, and assist students with completing assignments outside of class. We are curriculum modifiers. We work together with case managers and gen ed teachers on ways to help students get the most out of their classes. This may include focusing on only the essential parts of assignments or altering how information is presented. We are interpreters. We help teachers and peers understand students who may have speech challenges. We are tech gurus. We help students log into their devices, submit assignments to Google Classroom, and navigate specialized software. We are social skills coaches. Every day brings new opportunities for our students to interact with their peers in classrooms, hallways, cafeterias, and in the community. We are there to help them, guide them in all these situations. We are group facilitators. During high school interpersonal skills classes, we facilitate group discussions between our students and peers and work with, on projects to ensure that all students are involved and projects are completed on time. We are data collectors. We report on student achievements and behaviors to case managers, which may be used in progress monitoring toward student IEP goals. We are administrative assistants. We assist case managers in planning and communication related to events that occur throughout the year. Paras come from many varied backgrounds. Some are just out of high school, working their first real jobs. Some are parents of children with disabilities who want to give back to their schools, and some, like me, are former executives who are in second or third careers after decades in the workforce. Yet many of us are forced to work second jobs just to make ends meet. Regardless of our backgrounds, we all deserve to be respected, valued, and paid for the many ways we support our students each day. I strongly urge you to recognize our Union's CWA 6400. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, that concludes our public comments for this evening. Moving on to action consent, 6.01 through 6.12. Are there any questions, any items we need to pull out for discussion?
Can I make a brief comment on 6.06?
Ms. Reagan.
Can I just make the comment?
Sure.
Okay. I am on the Olathe Head Start Council, Policy Council, and I am impressed, as always, with the amount of detail and work that goes into putting together the grant proposal for the federal dollars and the investment of time and energy that goes into that. It's extremely, it's a robust process, and the individuals who undertake it are extremely detail-oriented, and I appreciated the chance to sit in the meeting and go through all of the different items in that continuation grant proposal. So I am looking forward to voting for it.
Any other comments or questions on 6.01 through 6.12? Sign out and entertain a motion.
Move to approve action consent 6.01 through 6.12 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mrs. Johann.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Right, motion carries 6-0. Moving to action bids, contracts, and agreements, 7.01 through 7.18. Board, any comments we need to pull out? Sign out and entertain a motion.
I would move to approve action item 7.01 to 7.18.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Yurkovich and a second by Mr. Babbitt.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Moving on to action other. All right, board, let's see if we can get this process clean today, this evening. A bunch of appointments that we need to make. The first one, 8.01, the Kansas Association of School, so this is for the renewal, 8.01. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve payment to KASB for the 2425 fees as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mrs. Reagan.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. All right, 8.02, this is a nomination for the Kansas Association of School Board Nominating Committee. Board members, is there anyone who would like to volunteer for that nomination?
I would volunteer to serve in that role.
I move to cease nominations.
Second.
We have a motion by, we have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mrs. Reagan.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Motion to cease nominations carries 6-0.
I move to appoint Dr. Yurkovich to serve on the KASB Nominating Committee for a one-year term expiring in April of '25.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mr. Babbitt.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Moving on to 8.01, this is for the Kansas Association of School Board Legislative Committee. Any volunteers? I'm sorry, 8.03. Thank you. Any volunteers?
I would volunteer.
Any other nominations?
I move to cease nominations.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Babbitt and a second by Mrs. Steele.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
I move that we appoint Julie Steele to the KASB Legislative Committee. Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Reagan and a second by Mrs. Johann.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. That was the cleanest we have ever done that. All right, moving on to future action items. Board, there's a lot there. We do have some information that was presented to us this evening around 9.38, so take that and read that at your leisure. A couple of information written reports. I do want to highlight the bond update for May of 2024. There's a lot in there, particularly, I know some of our students are excited to see some completed playgrounds, so Travis isn't here this evening, but congrats to him and his team for getting that done. And there's furniture in the new Santa Fe Trail building, so check that out. There's some good stuff in there. Board, topics for discussion. Dr. Yurkovich.
I just want to acknowledge that yesterday was Principal Appreciation Day, National Principal Appreciation. In this semester, we have recognized secretaries and counselors and paras and all of those who report daily to a school building to support our kids. And then next week, with teacher appreciation, just want to give advance congratulations and thank you to those who, again, are in the buildings every day. And to also acknowledge the end of year is an exciting time and a crazy time with all of the activities, and a thank you to all of those that make those things happen, including many of the people in this room tonight who serve in the custodial role, because with each activity, of course, there's setup and cleanup and, and just an appreciation and an acknowledgement for the excitement at the end of the school year.
Board, any other comments or topics for discussion? Mrs. Reagan.
I spent various time the last month doing various things around our district and am just always walking away very proud. Spent about an hour today at Mission Trail touring that beautiful building and just, you know, seeing the resource there just as a great space and knowing that we have another building that is like it, and Santa Fe Trail will be like it as well. I still don't fully understand why swimming pools in Olathe are in middle schools. I would love to know more about that. I'm kind of kidding, but not really. But it was fun to see the pool. It's a great space, and it was neat seeing the Olathe West Swim Team senior pictures up on the wall there. My children and I attended the volunteer appreciation reception last week. It was a room filled with people who love Olathe schools. Not everyone was there, but it's 617 volunteers who've logged almost, I think, 18,000 hours of volunteer work this school year. The Reagan children really enjoyed handing out those pins for years of service. It was a great event put on by people who really appreciate those individuals who take time out of their days to be in our buildings. It was a pleasure to be at Merrick Dinsbang's Celebration Assembly at Olathe East for his national award for spirit of sport. To see the community of East coming around him and the other kids who are in Unified Sports was very powerful. My son actually participates in Special Olympics as well, so having that through line for me to see what maybe his experience may be like in the future was really powerful to see. And I know I've got a lot, I'm sorry. I got to do some capstone zooms for our distinguished scholars academy leadership program last week, and McKenna Burns and Sahitha Kunduru did such wonderful jobs on their presentations. The fact that they are just seniors in high school blew me away. It's a testament to their hard work, but also their instructors over the course of their education. I also wanted to congratulate Sahitha for being a National Merit Scholarship winner. She found, that was announced, I saw on my social media, like, the same day I saw her presentation. It was really neat. I was like, I met her today! So that was so cool. I appreciated Ann Ma's discussion of the Ed Budget Bill, 387. There was some really promising compromise that went into that bill, and that's not something we see often. So it was powerful to see that the way the votes turned out, too, they were overwhelmingly passed in both sides of the legislature. That being said, the discussion around equitable and fair funding for schools should not be contentious. It should not be a battle. So I remind everyone in our community that this year, we get to elect the entire legislature across the state of Kansas, and making sure we have people there who aren't just vocal about their support of schools, but we see that support in their votes when they serve us in Topeka. It puts our district and our state in a much better position. And finally, the power of connection, going to New Orleans for the National School Board Association Conference was a wonderful opportunity for us to get to know each other better as a board and for us to know some of the staff and to go to some great sessions. But the power of connections you make when you're young, teachers, you have such an influence. My high school English teacher was there as a board member of the district that I grew up in, and I got to see her and seen her in years. And so the connections you're making today, especially on these hard days of May, where we are all just, you know, watching the clock for summer to hit, they are so important and valuable, and you don't know when a student's going to pull that discussion or that connection out of their mind and change their career path to become a teacher or volunteer in a school when they have a free afternoon. So thank you so much. It is a pleasure to serve, and I can't believe that it's May. That's crazy.
Mr.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yeah, I'll just give a little bit of history about the middle school pools.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Yurkovich.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I'll serve as a historian, I guess, here. My understanding is that when Santa Fe Trail, the original Santa Fe My understanding is that when Santa Fe Trail, the original Santa Fe Trail Building was being built, there had been a loss of life at a swimming pool in the community. So the leadership in the district decided that swimming should be part of the physical education curriculum. And with that first school, they included a pool. And then, of course, with the additional nine, that has continued. So it is part of P E curriculum and and that's the why.
The more you know.
I appreciate the why.
Board, any other topics for discussion? Mr. Babbitt.
Is that going to be in the next book, next history of Olathe schools? I feel like there needs to be a section. This morning I was able to go to the academic and military signing event at Olathe North put on by the principal and Mr. Belsky there and it was pretty amazing to see, just hundreds of kids going across the stage, hearing about the schools they were going to, hearing the areas they're going to be studying. And the best part for me was the amount of the quotes they were giving, given from different authors or artists they enjoyed, as well as going out of their way to thank so many of their educators that worked with them, as well as their parents that supported them throughout it. So it was a really inspiring thing to attend and it was it was really appreciated for the invitation. I also wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Belsky, who's retiring this year after twenty-two years, for putting on yet another incredible event at Olathe North. So thank you for the invitation.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes. I would just frame my comments tonight under perspective. I've gained a new perspective in the last few months being in this position and really enjoyed it. I had the opportunity, and you may call me crazy, to run a half marathon earlier this month through the city of Olathe. And as I was running, I noticed many of our schools on the route. I noticed an officer there. I waved at him. He didn't, he didn't remember me. Next time, next time. I thought this is just a really neat opportunity for me to see a different perspective of a city that I live in, I'm a part of, my kids are in this community, and really see everybody come together. I also have my son's football practice. He's in flag football. He's in kindergarten. We did not get kindergarten enrollment, but I can definitely appreciate all the work that that you all put into that. But his flag football practice is on Northwest Field and just being there just just gives me a whole, a whole different feeling, a whole different vibe for the school district and what we do for our kids. So honestly, that's really where I'm at, perspective. I'm super excited to be able to attend in a different capacity next month. Well, this, no, it's this month. My cousin graduates from Northwest and so I'll be able to be there for her graduation and really excited about that. So thank you again for allowing me to have this opportunity. I'm super happy to be here and continue to work with all of you.
Mrs. Steele.
I'm glad you brought up graduation because I was going to say to our newer board members, it's one of the joys of this role. So enjoy every bit that you get to be a part of that. It's very special. I got to go to a couple of retirement parties, but one of them was super special. I certainly support and understand the golden effect that our paras have in our classroom. My career started in special education and I had two of the very best paras by my side and the three of us taught together and it was really a beautiful thing. So I appreciate the paras who spoke tonight. One of those paras decided to get her teaching license, so for the para who talked about that tonight, don't give up on that, consider that. And then I went to her retirement party last week and she taught for twenty-five years after we taught together. And so that was a great joy for me to go over to Sunnyside and be at Kim Salmon's retirement party. So shout out to paras and all they can be for our kids. I also wanted to echo what Ms. Reagan said about the opportunity we have for P D as a board. There's a couple of those and one of them happened last month when we went to the National School Board Association Conference and we got to sit through several breakout sessions, as well as some really unique keynote speakers. And I'm just going to mention a couple of them. One was Dr. Timothy Shiver, who in twenty nineteen, a group of people decided to form a group called Unite, and that's all capital letters. And what they did was, their goal was to, how do we bring people together across divide? And they actually developed a scale that's become quite successful and it's called the Dignity Index. And he was such a powerful speaker that throughout the rest of our time together as a board, we were using some of that language in calling each other out on maybe how we were being inclusive or not inclusive and it was really, it was good. We learned a lot and maybe that dignity index will become part of our our language as a board. We also got to hear Ruby Bridges. And if you don't know that name, when she was six years old, she was one of the first to desegregate the school in her Mississippi small town. And, you know, you think about that, she was six years old and she's now sixty-nine and she speaks at a lot of events. And you go, gosh, that was sixty-three years ago that we were doing this? Doesn't that not seem right? So anyway, we've come a long way and we have a long way to go. So it was great to get our own professional development as a board. And that's all I have. President?
Well, you still might too.
You'll say it better than I did.
No. I do, I do want to share one of the stories that Ruby Bridges shared when she did her keynote. She talked about how her teachers inside of the building, who looked like the folks on the outside of the building, who were showing her hatred and, you know, disdain for being a six-year-old little girl and trying to go to school. But it was the teachers on the inside of the building who showed her love and created a safe space for her. And she spoke about how looking at these, these folks who look similar, but treated her drastically different, impacted her life. And then with the the dignity index, Tim Shriver, this is what he said. He said, "Our disagreements aren't causing the divisions in our country. It's what we do when we disagree. Do we treat the other side with dignity or do we treat them with contempt? The first brings us together, the second drives us apart." So it was really, really, listening to those two keynotes in New Orleans was really, really impactful. And Julie's right, we played with that dignity index for the rest of that trip. So Dr. Yager, I believe the fore is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. So several things I'd like to share tonight. One is an exciting thing as we think about Teacher Appreciation Week next week, but also an opportunity to thank all of our staff in our school district. Those of you who are parents and everyone in the community that has a connection to our district through email received in our monthly kind of e-newsletter that we provide last week. An invitation to to fill out a form, to send a note to a staff member, to thank them for all that they do and show appreciation. A great idea from our communications team and really a special way to show our staff appreciation. So they're working hard to follow up with the three hundred and seventy-five that have been completed as of today and making sure that those thank yous get out to the appropriate staff members. But it's open until May tenth, so anybody that would hear, we would sure appreciate you taking, taking the time to fill out that form from the newsletter reaching out to staff members in the district who make a difference every day. So just wanted to highlight that as an opportunity today. Yesterday, as you heard, was Principal Appreciation Day. Principals are celebrated every day in our district. I'm just kidding. Same way superintendents are celebrated every day perhaps. But, you know, I sent our principals a little message last night, but but one of the things I talked about is how there are so many people in our school system to do what's right for kids, but principals are the one every day that puts their schedule, the things that they need to get done on the sideburner to take care of whatever's in front of them. And that could be a student need, a staff need, a community need. But, you know, our principals are very well trained. They do a great job. But the reality is, is they don't know necessarily what's going to walk in the door of their office from day to day. Or in Mr. Demery's case, if he's out rolling around the building with his, his desk. You just never know what's going to happen from one minute to the next. And our principals do such a good, good job of navigating that every single day. So I just wanted to echo what Dr. Yurkovich said and just thank our principals for all that they do each and every day. Today was a really exciting day. Mr. Boyd, you kind of mentioned this, but there is some furniture going in at S F T. But also today was the very first student group that visited the new S F T. So I think maybe Dr. Waters put some stuff out on Twitter or somebody maybe has. But it was so fun. Maybe you just sent me pictures. Is that what it was? Okay. She sent me highly confidential pictures. But it was really exciting to see young people walking through the halls of the new S F T today. I actually had the opportunity last week to go in and walk around with Mr. Pelangi and Dr. McMullen. And I have to tell you in full vulnerability that I had tears in my eyes as I walked around the school. And the reality is, is, you know, there's so many things I'm proud of every single day in our district. But as I walked through there, I was really overcome by the fact that there is no stronger sign in our community that we care about every kid we serve. And I'm just so proud of the, the board and their foresight for doing that, our, our staff and boy, Mr. Libel too, you know, our principal there. He is the first principal in our history to open and close a school all at the same time. So I'm just so proud of everything that's, that's happening there and so exciting, so excited about all of that. A couple of you've mentioned it, but graduation is upon us where we will say goodbye to the senior class of twenty twenty-four. Our five comprehensive high schools will start on the seventeenth and then go through Sunday, the nineteenth. We're excited to see you all as board members there. But we also have some other important graduations that I wanted to mention tonight. We'll have students that will graduate from Prairie Learning Center in a ceremony there. We have a couple of students that will graduate from Claire Learning Center, which is really exciting. And then we will also, as we do every year, have students graduate from our Step Up Program. And that's our high school degree completion program where we will have students in a variety of ages and life experiences who will graduate. And that's one of the things that makes Olathe really special. So so proud of all of our graduates, whether they're eighteen or forty-seven. It's a great accomplishment for all of them. And then lastly, I would just say that, you know, as this is our last board member of the school year, like every year, we've had challenges and really positive things happen. And we're a large enough system that the odds are in our favor for both of those things to happen each year. But as I reflect on the year, I'm so proud of the work that our staff has done this year. And, you know, the, the work of, of being in education is not easy. Whether you work in business and finance, or if you're a first grade teacher or a para in our district. But I just want to show my appreciation and thank those who continue to show up every day and do what's best for our students across the system. Obviously, the graduates of twenty twenty-four would not be where they are with, without many staff members doing that. And then finally, I just want to wish a well wish to our staff members who are retiring. We don't have a huge group of retirements this year, but we certainly have a great deal of expertise that's going to be leaving us and, and moving on. And we wish them very well as they go. Also, in a system our side, we have a size, we have a number of people who resign and do other things moving forward and want to wish those folks well as, as well. I think I just used the word well maybe seven times in about thirty seconds. So we hope whatever is in the future for all those people is extremely rewarding for them. Those are my comments tonight.
Well, moving on to moving on to thirteen dot zero one, fifteen minutes for the first executive session.
I'm actually, if you don't mind, I'm going to recommend maybe we do twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay. I move the board going to executive session for the purpose of discussing matters relating to employer, employee negotiations and that the board return to the regular meeting at eight. What'd you say, twenty-five?
Ten.
Eight, ten.
Twenty-eight, okay, eight, ten P M.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mrs. Johann.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Eight thirty or how do you want to do that?
Yes, let's do eight thirty.
Fifteen minutes, eight thirty.
Rounded.
Three minute warning still?
Yes.
Or do you need one or not?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you move to extend it?
I would.
I second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Ms. Barrow.
For the purpose of consulting with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged, an attorney-client relationship with the board, or to the client to the regular meeting at... Where we at?
9:30.
Do we?
Right, yeah, maybe 30.
9:15.
If you want, but if he gets done in 30, he said 30, we'll make it be done, then we can't come back. Can't come back early.
9:15, 35 minutes.
Okay, he's, do it.
9:15.
9:15, great. Three-minute warning?
9 seconds.
Oh yeah, sorry, thank you, and you all vote yes.
Why does Dr. Vanikowski have a name badge there?
There's six people watching.
Camera?
We are good.
Okay, thank you!